Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 7th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. I hope everybody had a great holiday season, and we're back at work, so could I have a roll call, please?
All five selectmen?
All five selectmen are present, as well as Town Council and Town Administrator.
Alright, Pledge of Allegiance, let's see. Yeah, Mr. Corbett.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States is a free and equal public, for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements. Alan, I know you just got back, but you might have something to say.
No.
No, okay. Jim?
Well, I'm good.
Peter, nothing? Mary? Nothing? Well, announcements went by fast. Citizens' comments, anybody here to speak to the board this evening? Okay, come on down.
Yep. Sam Corbett for Jonathan Lane. Want to talk about plowing or the lack thereof. We're a new development, eighteen houses. We've been told since we're an association, we can't be plowed. And looking around town, there are a dozen associations. The largest one has big signs, "Private Association, don't come to our beach, don't come to our tennis courts." They're everywhere, they get plowed. Associations all over town get plowed. Private streets get plowed. And I can take you through a half dozen private streets that get plowed every time it snows. And the strangest one's accepted. I'm a realtor, and we've had a mass amount of development over the last fifteen years. If all those neighborhoods came to be accepted, that's all town meeting would be, is accepted roads, accepted roads. West Wareham, East Wareham, Little Harbor, Burgess Point, Cremesit, Swift Beach, developments in every one of those neighborhoods, none of them have come here to be accepted, and they're now supposed to be plowed. So, I guess my question is, what I'd like to do is have you all put it on the agenda at some point, so we can talk about it open. I know you're not supposed to answer questions. We pay our taxes to the tune of seventy-two thousand four hundred and six last year, that's public record. The time it takes to plow our street is about a minute. It's brand-new, it has curbs, has a sidewalk, has lights, has a cul-de-sac at the end, plow comes down, turns around, goes out, about a minute. A minute for my street, a minute for the next street, Jordan, and less than that for the street that has two houses on it. If you could open it up to discussion, I'd like to have people from other associations, private roads, they don't want to come here because they don't want to be known. Had a house listed down off Ananimit, and big stone pillars. You go through, it's all private, gets plowed every storm. You go through the pillar, take a left, it's a little tiny street, about ten houses, about this wide, gets plowed, every storm. And it doesn't appear there's a real policy, it's hit or miss all over town. So if you would be so kind to put it on the agenda, so we can talk about it open meeting, so I can answer questions. If anybody wants to go to any of these areas I mentioned, I'd be happy to take you. Patrick had my phone number, I'll take you to private streets, take you to associations that are plowed, and you can make your own decision on what we should do with them. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, anybody else to speak to us tonight? Where is she? Oh, there we go, come on down. Just tell us who you are.
Pamela Hamlet, and I reside at 3 Jonathan Lane.
Okay.
I'd also like to speak to you tonight about our road not being plowed by the town when it snows. I work as a registered nurse, therefore I'm considered essential personnel that must go to work regardless of the weather conditions. Another factor that I would ask to be considered is what would occur if a medical or fire emergency were to happen and the police or firemen could not get down the road because of snow. As a contributor, contributing taxpayer to the town of Wareham, I feel the roads being plowed should be included. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, awesome. Board com-- oh, one more, come on down. Didn't see you, sorry.
I was waiting for everybody out.
You're the next contestant.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Yarasha, I live on 9 Jordan Road, same area, same development, I'm actually on the Board of Directors. And the development has been going on for probably about four years now, and throughout the process, we have been getting plowed, and it became an issue, I think, last year, where all of a sudden we weren't getting plowed. There was an issue over whether or not it was the builder's responsibility or the town's responsibility. We all reached out to everybody, the builder and here. The builder is actually on the zoning board here, so he's familiar with the policies and the situations. I personally had many conversations with him, being the builder, regarding our concern for the street being signed off and making sure that gets done before he turned over the association and signed off on the certificate for the property and the whole development. He reiterated to me on many conversations that I had with him that this would not be a problem. I was concerned because there was another development years ago with one of our neighbors that had a house built over in the Swift Beach area, and he failed to sign off and get the street accepted. And they wound up spending a lot of money with lawyers trying to have to pull together at the last minute and figure out how to get the street accepted. This isn't a normal process for people who build a home with a builder to have to worry about whether or not later on we have to figure out how to get our street accepted. There's drainage issues, all kinds of plans that have to be presented, these are all things that the builder has, not us, for this whole development. And again, was made clear, and swore up and down that this was not going to be a problem. I understand that they tried very hard at the last minute to get the street accepted for the October meeting. He failed to do so, so he did do the plantings and managed to get, I'm not sure how he got the certificate signed off on, but it got turned over to us so quickly that we didn't even know what we were doing. And now we're being told that it's not his responsibility and that it's not the town's responsibility, and I've been told by the Highway Department that if there's more than three inches of snow, they will try, because it is a fire regress, it's a public access. So, and I appreciate that, I understand that there's a shortage in the town. We do pay a lot of taxes, it's not, it's not a low, low-income area, it's a very high-income building property that we have, and we pay a lot of taxes for it. And I don't know who's responsible for the fact that we got slipped under the cracks, so to speak, but for now, what I'm looking for is just at least some type of lenience, if we can possibly get it temporarily, just for the next couple of months, until we can figure out what we need to do and who's responsible for getting our streets signed off on, so that this is permanently taken care of. But in the meantime, none of us have any capabilities whatsoever of getting our streets taken care of. And again, it's only eighteen houses, but I do know that the town has a shortage for plowing, so I do understand that also. So, you know, again, the fault obviously isn't with the town, and I do know that they made an amendment as far as private roads go. I do know that there was a lot of controversy over that, and hopefully it will change again. But right now, we just need something done, because we've got snowstorms coming, and we have no idea what to do. Builder won't respond, the, nobody, the developer, no one will respond to us, so.
Alright, thank you.
If you could consider it.
We'll get some information together.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bye. Yeah, well, the other woman wasn't, she's from another place. I don't know why she's, she's from another place, they must have been talking. Alright, so next up would be board comments.
No, we've gone through this, we've gone through this before, you know, I don't really want to discuss this at all.
No, no, we'll talk about, we'll, we'll.
When you put it on the agenda, we should really go through Town Council.
Well, I think.
We've already made, you know, decisions on this.
We'll just figure out what, so we gotta figure, what we gotta do is post, I think, an absolute policy and what have you, so whatever it is.
I think we actually have it.
So we'll have to look through all that stuff and see what we get.
About town policies.
Yeah, which you guys are working on anyway, right?
Yeah, somewhat. There's probably a number of things we need to look at concerning this, not just their development, but in general, and the homeowners' associations and the people developing them, and how people are kind of, either they do not, go ahead.
Confusing board comments with board comments on the citizens.
I know.
Yeah. That's alright, didn't mean to say that.
Yeah.
So, we'll put it on the agenda and.
We'll deal with this later, okay?
Okay, back to where we started.
So that we can, because we gotta have all the information before we, you know.
Yeah, we have to start.
Do you have any board comments?
Yeah, Plymouth 400, I have a meeting sometime this week with the organization, to see how Wareham will be involved or not involved with the celebration. They contacted me while I was away.
Any board comments?
No.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Alright.
Mary?
No, I'm good.
Alright, well, that was a good one, that was fast. Okay, interviews, we don't have any appointments or everything? We got a few more minutes before so-and-so, let's do the application for a change of officers, directors, change of ownership interest from 99 West LLC DBA 99 Restaurant. Now, I can explain to you what happened with this. The percentage of ownership has changed considerably, like eighty-four percent or something of the ownership. So therefore, the ABCC made us advertise it and do the whole thing, as opposed to, you know how we do a lot of these normally and whatever, but it's the percentage was the problem.
Oh, you could want to change your officer.
Because it's like selling the corporation, when you sell eighty-four percent, you're like sold the company.
Yeah.
So it's like a new company. So that's why they made us do this all over again.
Just to realize.
Yeah, basically, okay? I'm just letting you know.
Alright.
Alright? So, does anybody have any, does anybody here know? Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, then go ahead and make a motion.
I move that we approve the application for the change of officers/directors and change of ownership interests from 99 West LLC DBA 99 Restaurant.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Application for a change of manager, well, yeah, we'll do this. Application for change of manager for Point Independence Yacht Club, 15 Independence Lane, Onset. I think we get these like pretty much every year when they change their officers and stuff. Is anybody here? Come on now. I think this happens like every year, because you change officers.
Every two years, so.
Every two years, okay. I knew there was something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we do have, isn't there a, the quarry and stuff's gotta come back, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what happens with these is we approve them, but the quarry still has to come back from ABCC, so you can't pick it up until they approve everything, okay? Alright, is there any other discussion? Anybody have any discussion?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, motion, please.
Okay, I move that we approve the application for the change of manager from Point Independence Yacht Club, 15 Independence Lane in Onset, Mass.
Second.
Motion?
Pending the quarry check.
Yeah, well, that's automatic, the ABCC won't let you release it anyway. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Alright, it's now fifteen minutes past, and I want to go to the continued hearing of Infamable Liquids License, application of Sam's Gas, 307 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Could I have a motion to open the hearing? Back. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Okay, the hearing is open. Alright, so there were a bunch of questions the last time around that we had to get answers to. I have Mr. Smith here, I'd like to bring him down. There were some questions. One, one had to do with the tanks themselves, and whether they were actually double-walled tanks, and I believe you found an answer to that.
Yes, you push the button.
If it's green, it's.
If it's green, you're good, just yell loud.
Alrighty, so the new tanks.
I'm sorry, interrupt, do you want to just let everybody know who you are?
Lieutenant Chris Smith, Wareham Fire Department, Fire Department Officer. The tanks that are in the ground now were installed March 10th, 1988. They're double-walled tanks, and they are composite, so they're, they don't need the cathodic protection that's required, so. There's three tanks, they're 5,000 gallons each. They have been third-party inspected as recently as May 13th, 2019. Compliance certification, January 17th, 2018. And they did have a new sump pump installed, 2017.
Which was required, because of the new pump has to be a different style pump.
Required.
Just so everybody knows, there's a new style pump that was required. In July of 18, July of 18, you had to have all double-walled.
Yeah, and they had it done in 17.
So we're okay there. Now, we did have some information regarding whether there were fuel in the tanks now?
There is, I have a report from July 11th, 2019, that states Tank 1 has 957 gallons in it, Tank 2 has 854 gallons in it, and Tank 3 has 884 gallons in it.
So 2,400 gallons, roughly.
Eighteen hundred and eleven gallons total.
Eighteen hundred and eleven gallons, okay.
In the three tanks.
Alright, so those were the answers to the questions that we had. Does any of the board members have any questions to ask of the applicant? Nope? Nobody has any questions? Okay, is there anything else the applicant wants to say?
I think he would just reiterate that, you know, this is not a new installation, this is an old installation. I think your, your questions have been answered concerning the double-walled steel tanks, and, because I know the last time we were here, your question was whether they needed to be replaced, which under the law, they do not. And also, you had questions about whether there was any gasoline in there, which obviously you've gotten the answer to that.
Right.
So, we've checked through all of the town bylaws, we don't see anything that would prohibit your board from granting Sam's application for the license, and we would request that you grant him the license.
Okay, thank you. Alright, could I have a motion to close the hearing, please? Motion made by Alan, seconded by Jim. Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick? Yes. Okay, the hearing's closed. Okay, does anybody have any comments or anything they want to say?
Nope.
Okay.
I actually have a couple.
Okay.
You know, one of the interesting things here is that, you know, many, I don't want to say many years ago, but I think within the past ten years, Town Meeting had made a decision through amending the zoning bylaws to essentially eliminate additional gasoline stations in town. The interesting thing here is that our Zoning Board of Appeals does have the ability to grant use variances in zones where it isn't specifically prohibited for them to do so. So that's why this is coming before us, and I just want people to understand that, because I'm sure there are people out there who are going to, you know, read the stories tomorrow and say, hey, wait a minute, I remember when Town Meeting said that we didn't want any more gas stations and they were banned. But this is sort of the, the one loophole that allows a businessperson like Sam to go and petition for relief before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and if he receives the relief, then he is granted a use variance, and he can go ahead with what he intends to do, even though, you know, perhaps that runs counter to the spirit of what Town Meeting had decided. So that's, that's why we're here, that's why we're considering this tonight.
And it's a good thing we make that point, because there's a guy on Cranberry Highway who's gonna be pretty angry with us.
Yep.
Pretty angry with the town as a whole, as a result of this. But that, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't change anything, it is what it is.
Well, I mean, any person that wants a use variance can certainly apply to get one.
The problem is that there's some zones that explicitly denied, and Cranberry Highway happens to be one of them. So, if you're out on Cranberry Highway, you're kind of a problem. Anybody else?
Nope.
Alright, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, okay? You gonna make a motion?
Yeah, you can if you want.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Jim, do I have a second? Motion made by Jim, seconded by Mary, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 500. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a sort of a dumb question, that's a, does that, that old gas gets emptied out, or how does that work? Is that bad stuff now?
Sometimes they add some detergent and additive to it.
Okay.
They test it anyway when they come in every year. We have another test coming at the end of the month.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know.
If they said remove it, we'll remove it.
Okay.
You're looking for the dollar now.
Exactly.
Buy a sale.
I gotta line up the town vehicles right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you folks know, when you do grant his license, then he'll have to come in and see me for a permit.
Right.
Right.
And then we'll have to bring your tank up to, your station up to compliance.
Alright, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Smith, for coming in, thank you so much for taking your time and coming to the hearing, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next, huh? I just, the hearing's been closed. Alright, renewal of a year-round common vicula all-alcoholic beverage license for the year 2020, under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws for Barnacle Bill Seafood LLC DBA Barnacle Bill Seafood 3126, Cranberry Highway, East Wareham.
Okay, I move that we approve the renewal of the year-round common vic all-alcoholic beverage license.
Motion made by Mary to approve, seconded by Alan, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, next up, we're gonna establish the date for Spring Town Meeting, and I'm gonna let Peter read it, because it takes a little bit of time, and he seems to think he's a good speed reader, and he seems to do a good job.
Well, before I start here, the legislation that Town Meeting passed on to the legislature from last spring, it's cleared the Senate, and it's been engrossed by the Senate, it's in third reading in the House, and that can potentially change some of these deadlines and move them forward closer to Town Meeting, if that comes through before we end up closing the warrant here. So just want everybody to know that, you know, today, this is the process we have to follow under our charter, but once the governor signs this into law, if he does it soon enough, then we can actually give everybody a little more time to prepare their articles.
Okay.
So, with that in mind, this is the process for calling the 2020 Spring Annual Town Meeting. This is actually interesting, it's got April 7th, 2020 elections on here, that's actually not.
The form of the motion, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, taken.
And it's actually not going to be May 7th, 2020, because the charter change does not involve the election, it only involves Town Meeting. The election date was changed by the state's approval of our bylaw change that was also part of that article. So the election date is actually going to be May 5th, 2020. So I've got a couple of copies to hand out to the media here, and I'm just gonna change those now, so that they don't get the wrong election day.
So, what is the date?
Selectmen Bruce and I are happy you extended our terms.
So what is the, the date now?
The new date will be May 5th, 2020.
There we go. It's nice that it's after the Town Meeting now.
Yep.
Well, but you know, right, it can't be, but the other thing.
Cinco de Mayo, which is almost as bad.
But it always worked out to be a problem, because you lose the continuity going into Town Meeting, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It'd be nice if you could clean that up before the new people came in, you know?
Well, the other thing for the people is, this forces anybody who's running for selectmen to take a position on things at Town Meeting, and then the voters get to decide whether they like what they did. You know, it's a more, but you're on the spot a little, a little before the election, instead of after the election.
So you might be glad for your extension, but maybe not.
Yeah, exactly, it might, it might be cursing everybody come May 5th. Send me packing, I won't be happy. Anyway, election is on May 5th, 2020. April 27th, 2020 is general business. Tuesday, January 7th, 2020, that's today, the Board of Selectmen should establish all dates for completion of a warrant for the annual Town Meeting. And again, that's somewhat up in the air, but we're, we're starting the, the process we know is in place tonight. Friday, January 31st, 2020, last day to post in at least one public place in each precinct, the notice of intention of the Board of Selectmen to call the annual Town Meeting for April 20th, 2020. That's pursuant to bylaws Division 1, Article 1, Section 3, which is 10 days' notice by posting in precincts before the warrant closes. Monday, February 3rd, 2020, last day to submit all articles except for citizens petition articles to be inserted in the warrant. Thursday, February 6th, 2020, last day to submit citizens petition articles and all other articles to be inserted in the warrant. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4C, which is 45 days before Town Meeting convenes. And as a side note, it's this lengthy 45-day period that the pending legislation will substantially eliminate. Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, Board of Selectmen should officially close the warrant. Again, we'll see what the legislation does. Friday, February 14th, 2020, happy Valentine's Day, and it's also the last day to post in each precinct, and deliver a copy of the warrant to the Town Moderator and to the Chairman of each committee established by Section 2-5 of the Charter. This is under actually 2-4D, within three days of the closing of the Charter, the closing of warrant, rather. Tuesday, February 18th, 2020, last day to submit to the Finance Committee articles included in the warrant. This is under bylaws Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, no later than 35 days before Town Meeting convenes. I think in the legislation we wrote, it, it sets the deadline as the second Monday for the Spring Town Meeting, so that could potentially change. Thursday, March 5th, 2020, last day to publish entire warrant in a local newspaper, which is 14 days before Town Meeting. That looks like a lot more than 14 days before Town Meeting to me, but we can figure that out. We have, we have to get it done 14 days before Town Meeting. Once again, the election is not on April 7th, so that's not the commencement of Town Meeting. Town Meeting will commence on Monday, April 27th, 2020. General business portion of annual Town Meeting, which is under bylaws Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, which is the fourth Monday of April. And then finally, the add-on here is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, Town Election, 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM. That's my motion.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 500.
Now, we gotta do the notice of the Spring Town Meeting, the actual notice that gets posted out in the precincts. Town of Wareham, Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts. Notice of 2020 Spring Town Meeting, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth Shiretown, to either of the constables of the Town of Wareham. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in accordance with the provisions of Division 1, Article 1, Section 3 of the bylaws of the Town of Wareham amended, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the Town of Wareham that the annual Town Meeting has been called by the Board of Selectmen to be held at, and I gotta change this, Monday, April 27th, 2020, to be adjourned until 8:00 AM on May 5th, 2020, to be continued for the Town Election through 8:00 PM, May 5th, 2020. The last day for submission of citizens petition articles in the warrant is 5:00 PM, Thursday, February 6th, 2020. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, and you are hereby directed to serve this notice by posting attested copies thereof in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, honor before February, January 31st, 2020. Hereof fail not, and make due return of this posting with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk, given under our hands at Wareham the 7th day of January in the year 2020. Wareham Board of Selectmen, Patrick G. Troppiano, Chairman, Mary Bruce, Clerk, Alan H. Slaven, Peter W. Titlebaum, James M. Manise, and that's my motion.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
Rather than circulate this around to be signed now, we're going to have to correct the language that's in the middle here about when Town Meeting starts, because it's not going to start on the first Tuesday in April. It's going to start at Town Meeting. So we've got to get that squared away.
I don't think anybody realized that it was going to be May when we put it together.
No. So I'll get this prepared with the office.
Just leave it in the office, and we'll come in and sign it.
And I'll let you guys know when it's all set. I've got it taken care of tomorrow at some point.
Okay.
Okay.
Jim, you look confused?
No, just, you know.
Okay.
Except it has amended, you know?
Yeah.
There's a lot of amendments in there, and this date and that date, so.
Well, they'll be correct.
Kind of see it.
Yep.
Yeah, it'll be correct. All right, next up is an accepted donation of Wareham Free Library in the amount of $1,000 from the Westport Fund.
Motion so made.
Motion made by, by Alan, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, now, just so you know, next week, we have some things on the agenda, but we could use a few more items. So if there's anybody who has anything they want to get on the agenda, please bring it forward, okay?
How about an executive session to talk about some of the outstanding things we still have going and possibly releasing some of the executive minutes?
Okay.
Master plan. We're supposed to have comments.
Oh, yeah, we could do that master plan comments. That's right. I forgot we were going to do that. I actually think I put it on for the 14th, but I'll move it up. That's fine. Oh, that is the 14th, so it should be, it's on there.
How about that?
How about that?
How about that?
How about that? All right. Anybody else who has anything during the week, just, you have until Thurs- no, Wednesday, tomorrow, because she's going to be out Thursday, so we're going to post it tomorrow, okay?
I'd like to, probably can't do it for this coming week. I'm sitting too far away, Bob. I miss not hearing that from you anyways. Are we done yet?
You didn't hear it, Nevada?
No. I just heard that from- I heard that from Sandy, but there's-
Turn over a new leaf.
Other things said. I'm not turning over a new leaf. As a senior member here, I'm not turning over anything. The, I'm just trying to think what we're talking about. Lost track of thought. Having a senior moment. There was something else I wanted to take care of. I'll think about it as you're going back and forth.
Okay.
You have till tomorrow, Alan. Get it in.
All right, you have, if you have till tomorrow, just let, let her know, and we'll get it done. All right? All right, next up. Any other town business not reasonably anticipated last 48 hours? I believe that's not the case. And then the Town Administrator's Report. I'm sure he has got bated breath over there, could hardly wait.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you some good news. There was, uh-
Good news, we like that.
There were additional Chapter 90 funds released, and Wareham's portion of that is $74,768.
And do about, what, three feet?
Yeah.
What was the total Chapter 90 fund?
$20 million.
Did we get released?
No, $20 million for the total.
For this release was, was a $20 million, our portion is.
What's our portion for the year on Chapter 90?
Usually we're about, I don't have in front of me, you're about $770,000 or something, so it brings us up to about $850,000. Which, you know, if you're, if you're doing a road with the drainage, that gets you a little less than a mile, but if you're just doing a, a- Yeah, resurface, you get a little more mileage out of it.
Yeah, it's so bad. I mean, just think, that mile and a half out on Cranberry Highway cost 18 million. We get $700,000, $850,000 for the whole town. And they're talking about, by the way, does everybody realize they're talking about adding 35 cents a gallon to the gas tax?
Yep.
To give to the MBTA?
Yep.
That's absolutely just baloney, in my opinion. You know, why, not to mention, why would somebody out in western Massachusetts want to pay for the MBTA in Boston?
Well, they've got a couple of other things they plan besides that gas tax, so.
Well, but they would like to-
You better watch it closely.
Well, right, but they, it should be for the roads and bridges. They've been stealing that money long enough, haven't they?
They have other ideas for that.
Yeah, I know they do. Well, that's nice of them. All right.
There were, there were some, there has been some questions that was brought up about the short-term rental tax. That, just so people know, we did not have to go to Town Meeting to accept that. Because we already had the, the hotel motel excise tax, we automatically were entered into the full amount. So anybody that's going to rent, that has been renting, you need to make sure that, that you've watched out for that. If you're doing short, more than, you can do two weeks, I believe, without, without having to pay it.
14 days.
Right, 14 days, so two weeks thereafter, you have to make sure that you're collecting the rental, or you'll be, you'll be responsible for it, so.
And that's not two weeks per client. That's two weeks for the whole year.
Correct, for that property.
Right, for that property. It's two weeks for the whole year. A lot of people think, well, I only rented to this guy for two years, and that guy for two weeks, and that guy for two weeks. It doesn't work that way.
If you have a long-term rental, this does not impact you.
Right, exactly.
So how much have we collected on that? Has it been disbursements from the state? Has it been two now?
The, I haven't seen the, the state said the disbursement was within our hotel motel excise tax, and the difference, the difference was only about $10,000 from one year over to the other for that quarter, so.
We haven't got the second quarter yet, right?
No, that's, I'll take a look, but it doesn't look like-
Coming up soon.
Well, you know, it was kind of brand-new, and there's a lot of people, Jim, that didn't, aren't on board and haven't done it, you know what I mean? So it'll come, it'll come. It takes time to get everybody.
The major companies are collecting it and sending it to the state.
Right, VRBO, Airbnb.
Into a separate category, so you kind of had to try to figure it out, and I didn't know if they had separated the categories for the second quarter yet, or if we'd received it.
Yeah, I hadn't seen it, but I'll, I'll double-check.
If it's buried in there, you have to kind of-
It's tough, because without a breakdown, all I'm taking is the previous year's hotel motel excise tax, which, you know, and we could have had a better year or so. It's tough to tell, but it is not, it has not amounted to much so far as we can-
You could have had a better year, or the prices could have gone up.
Yeah, so.
But, so.
This is a background. It would be good to check and see what the hotel, which seems to have been busier in the last year than the previous year, because, you know, in Wareham, I don't think you're going to see a lot of B&amp;B as compared to the Cape, because that was the biggest push, was Cape Cod for this, because they were expecting a lot of money to come in.
We get a lot of rentals around Swiss Beach and stuff.
We have a substantial amount, actually.
2,700 rentals that I know of.
It depends on how they record it.
Of different kinds, though.
You know, whether they're going through an agency, whether they're doing it privately. I think there's going to be an enforcement issue on this long term.
Is that it?
That's it.
I have a question there for our administrator.
You were easy tonight.
Eric, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
I, I got a question regarding the revenues raised through the marijuana tax and the, basically, how much have we gotten from the tax, you know, from the marijuana taxes, 3% and the other 3% impact fee, and specifically what we're doing with it? And I said, you know, 25% goes into a fund for, what is it, capital?
Got the reserve fund.
Right, and the other 75. So that was, you know, put to me directly. So the other 75%, is it just going to the general fund, or what's?
Yeah, so you can't spend a revenue. You can only budget your funds. So when you look at it, if the people want to find out what we budgeted for it, you just go to the FY '20 budget. So if you pull up the FY '20 Wareham Budget, and you can literally go to Google and type in FY '20 Wareham Budget, it will pop up, and you'll see cannabis, we budgeted $150,000, so.
Right, but there's still other reserves.
And then 25%.
25%.
25% when-
75% from cannabis just sweeps into the general fund.
Right, that goes into the general fund.
And it just gets spent as-
So what happens is, right, if you have, if you have surplus revenue and your expenses didn't over, that's much like your own savings account, the money left over. That's what we call free cash. So when we go to Town Meeting and we pay for police cars, school buses, things like that, that's where that money's coming from. All right, and so the other thing is, people are asking, where's the money from all the places we've licensed or given host agreements? There is only one operation open in this community, and I know you probably, you understand it, but many don't. We do not get any funds until these other communities are licensed by the Cannabis Control Commission and making sales. That's when you get the 3%. And those, anything out outside of retail is an impact fee. The impact, 3% impact fee, of which you can do that for five years. Thereafter, it may disappear.
Correct.
So if, so, and half the money we're getting right now, 3% from VeriLife, is an impact fee. We have the 3% excise plus an additional impact fee. So one of the things we will not do, because it's not sustainable, is we will not bring that impact fee money into the operating budget, because, especially for hiring staff or anything, because why would we hire people that we can't pay for in a, in a couple of years?
And we don't know how much revenues are going to be generated down the road from the regular excise tax either.
I think-
More and more come on.
I have to say, I think a million dollars in new revenue is pretty darn good, you know?
Well, without a doubt. People, people want to know, they, they, you know, they kind of want to know, well, they said we're going to get all this money, and what are you, what are you doing with that money?
Yeah.
What are you doing with it?
Go to Town Meeting, that's where it's done.
Of course, the tax bills just come out, so the other one is, my taxes went up $400.
Yeah, and part of the thing, one of the things people need to look at with their new tax bills, and this won't, this won't satisfy anyone, because I think, I think Selectman Titlebaum once said, to quote him, paying taxes sucks. But the, if you look at the increase, that increase, some of it's a little misleading, is that some of that increase you'll see on these two tax bills is part of the shortfall from the estimated two tax bills that you already paid for, for the year. So where if your taxes went up $400, they may have only, they've actually gone up $400 for the whole year, but you're paying that $400 increase over two quarters. So it looks like it went up $800 or something like that.
So you, are you saying that people should be thanking us for loaning them the money for half a year?
No, I would not say that. I don't want to get-
Okay, then.
So the, so the real tax bill was, was higher than the anticipated calculated tax.
That's usually what happens, so.
No, just, you know, I got, I got whacked on that a couple of times, and I just, what am I going to do? I don't set the rates. I mean, we do set the rates. And I said, oh, but we do set the rates.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, um-
We set the one-to-one ratio, that's all we said.
Yeah, we set the ratio.
Yeah.
The ratio is all we said.
Very interesting, you know, how you doing? How was your holidays? Hey, my tax bill went up $400.
It's funny, too, you know, people will focus on the tax rate number as though that actually means anything. It's your total tax burden if you want to compare to other communities. I mean, the square footage of my house, if you put it up on a lot that was a 12th the size in Quincy in a certain neighborhood, the house would be worth over 50% more, and the taxes would be close to the eight grand instead of, you know, the, the five grand or whatever it is I'm paying. So that's, you know, that's where you're actually paying a lower, a lower tax amount here. It's not necessarily the tax rate. That's, that's not even really part of the equation here. It's the total tax that you're paying, the total tax amount you're paying over the course of the year. That's what you compare to what the average home is in another community, or if you really want to go crazy, look, you know, all of these towns have, you know, websites on their assessor's website, where whatever company they use lists the value. It's almost like looking in the assessor's card. You can go in, find comps, you know, look for properties that are roughly the same size as yours, if they've got a water view, you know, square footage, you know, condition of the building, same, roughly the same size yard, compare it to those towns. And that's where you'll see that you're actually not paying anywhere near as much in Wareham as you would be in other communities.
It wasn't what other towns are paying, it's just the-
Sticker shock.
It's the sticker shock of $400 more, you know, going from $1,800 to $2,200, and, you know, very small home in a, in a cottage neighborhood, you know, quarter mile from the water. So, and, you know, this person's retired, so you kind of, you feel for them, but, you know.
How's this revalued this year, right? Didn't we do the reval?
Well, it's also, I think people need to understand that-
It moves around.
Our average single-family assessed value is just back to what it was in 2004. So you need to realize how hard the, the prices and stuff were hit in this community during that economic depression. Wareham was hit badly, especially with the prices, and the prices people are buying, and we looked at some of them, people are paying above assessed values for purchasing homes. And I've seen, I know of one person, at least, they had bought a, a converted cottage that was good, that before was seasonal, and it got, it got upgraded, and they bought it, and they said, well, it, it's jumped up over $1,000. So yes, you happened to have bought it, and now it's a year-round, and it's not, doesn't have the, the other parts of it, yeah, so.
I understand all of it, just go ahead, please, Mr. Slavin.
What's happened recently is that the small lots, which Wareham has a lot of, those homes have been in demand and have been selling at a substantially higher rate. So what's happened is that with the assessments, people with those small houses with that low tax rate have seen substantial increases. And it's going to be somewhat of an issue with people with fixed income, something we're going to have to realize. What's happened at the same time is some of the properties in the, out in the necks and stuff, where the properties were, the land values were extremely high, the prior assessment, have been readjusted lower, because they were overvalued, and also the real high-end homes, the actual sales records in the last year, they've dropped substantially. So the low end has gone this way, and the upper end down. So people with, say, a $5 million property, their taxes technically have gone down overall, but the people with like $100,000, $200,000 home are seeing some substantial increases strictly because of the dynamics of, of the market.
Well, they, when you revalue property, they, the things move around. It's like a moving target sometimes. Properties over here become more valuable, properties over there go down. I mean, it's, it's kind of crazy what happens, you know?
But that's what you're seeing now.
Yeah, it happens all the time, and that's part of, part of the way it kind of moves, unfortunately.
And the McMansion era is sort of behind us for what, what people really want, especially they realize that if you're going to retire, you don't want a 4,000-square-foot place, because it's, you can't take a very, yeah, so.
No fun to vacuum.
No vacuum. I don't think they vacuum.
All right, we're, we're-
We're moving on.
Did I help?
We're moving on, thanks. Liaison report, please.
Did you okay on it?
Mr. Slavin, you can start, although you didn't do much, I'm sure.
Okay. I flew in yesterday at 3 o'clock. At 6 o'clock, I was in Marion for the Route 6 meeting, talking about the modification potential. It's a study only. I hope everybody understands that this is not a project that's been red-lighted to actually happen. It's just an initial study by SERPET at the request of the four towns to look at. The actual road to be changed, if it ever does get done, could be five or 10 years out. In the meantime, the Swiss Beach Light Project that's part of that is moving ahead as well, just so people know. So it's not dependent on whether or not Route 6 gets changed from a four-lane to a three-lane or a two-lane or anything else. But there was a turnout of probably a couple hundred people. Didn't see Mary there, but she reported on it.
Wow.
I was freaking there.
I know, I was, I was up front. Didn't see you though.
I was freaking there.
Yep.
Make sure you put that down. I didn't see you there.
There you go.
Maybe if we could-
Well, Alan, it only took two days for you to take off the media.
Actually, it only took, it took me less than 24 hours, to be exact.
If we get a bus and put MBTA on the side of it and run it around town, can we get some of that money from the, from the gas tax, you think?
No, if we have an MBTA bus, they'll charge us a $50,000 fee.
Yeah, don't get it.
The assessment actually kicks right back in.
They've been raising our assessment anyway.
Not yet.
Wait till, wait till the new station gets built in Middleborough. Where do you see our assessment then?
No, because Lakefield's closer, so it's not going to change us.
It's what?
Lakefield is technically closer than, than Middleborough, so it won't change us at all.
Oh, I don't know. We'll see about that.
It won't change unless the train comes here.
We'll see.
I'm just telling you how it is. So, but it was a very good turnout.
We'll see.
It was over 200 people that showed up last night. It was kind of surprising.
Wow.
It was very cordial, nice discussion. Nobody was ranting and raving or yelling or anything.
That's nice.
Yeah, it was nice. SERPET did a very good job.
Is that it?
Sure.
You sure?
Hey, I've only been back here for like 18 hours. What do you want from me?
There's a CMW Subcommittee Meeting tomorrow, 10:00 AM over in Atlantis Ave in Marion. And one thing that we got in our mail, and I meant to ask you, would you, are you going to be at the MMA Meeting?
Yes.
So you'll be taking care of that?
Yeah.
Okay, otherwise I was going to say, Alan.
I'll be there.
Goodbye.
It is Saturday morning, yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I'll be there. I see, usually see Alan. Okay, next up? Nope.
Nope.
Nope, all right. That only leaves the consent agenda. Do we have anything? No, right?